We sent what, eight of, eight of ten seniors.
Wow, good job guys. Oh, come here. Alright.
Suck your belly in Mike.
How many of y'all are coming back next year? How many? One.
Two of them are here.
Two. Alright. Thank you guys and congratulations. And everyone's welcome to stay, or if you'd rather go home and enjoy the evening. We are gonna start our regular business meeting now. Alright, we'll move on to number five. Student empowerment and staff empowerment.
So, we are gonna start, I know Mr. Beard is in here, with a little presentation from him. We want to show you a couple of programs that we use to, number one, monitor student growth. So, take you through some intervention, benchmarking assessments that we do that help us track students' performance and get them on track and try to keep them on track. And then the other one, I hope you've got Schoollytics.
I've got a couple of slides.
Okay, so I'm just gonna let him take you through some curriculum, student achievement data.
Forgot the microphone was on. Okay, so, the first thing that I wanted to talk about, because I know in the board report there is a mention of the iXL end of year roundup, as far as the data is concerned. One of the things that we talked about at probably beginning of the school year is that we were making extra efforts to use or utilize iXL as an intervention piece between benchmarking three times a year. And so, what this end of year report told us is basically, it just gave us a snapshot of how much usage our sites are putting into it. As far as skill usage, basically, the recommendation from iXL is to have kids practice skills for twenty minutes, two times each week. And on average, they indicate that if kids can at least try to answer fifteen or more questions per week, that'll help boost their growth. If you look at this report though, on this first page, we're seeing that at some of our sites, some of our kids were doing into the eighties, nineties, and well over a hundred questions per week. So, we were really knocking it out of the park in terms of how much the kids are putting in time. And so, you're gonna see some of, for math and ELA on this report, you're gonna see some of our top standout sites in terms of site and grade and how many questions they're answering per week. So, like I said, if you look at that chart on the right, whereas iXL suggests that kids answer fifteen or more questions a week, the district average is about fifty-one questions per week. So, they're doing a really good job in utilizing that tool. Additionally, so far this year, seventy percent of the skills students have practiced have gone to proficiency. Basically, proficiency and mastery are the kind of measures that iXL looks for in terms of how well a student is learning a concept. So, if a kid is practicing a specific skill or concept and they score in the eighty percent range, that's considered proficiency. If they score in the hundred percent range, then that's considered mastery of that specific skill. And as it says on there, many of our standout schools are exceeding that average. So, that's a little bit about what that report is doing. But to give you a better understanding of how we're using that tool, I'm gonna give you kind of an idea of how elementary uses it. As we said, three times a year, we benchmark. In elementary, we specifically use the NWEA assessment to test students on math and language arts performance. And teachers, what we're looking at here is a teacher view. So, teachers have the ability to go in and choose a specific child, and they can print off what's called a student score chart. But in that student score chart that you see there, we're looking at this child's performance in language arts for the skills that they've practiced. And you can see according to this, that they have mastered seventy percent of the skills they've practiced. They are proficient in four percent of the skills, and then there are still twenty-six percent of those skills that they still have not achieved mastery or proficiency in. So, with that chart, if the teacher scrolls down a little bit further, they can see a breakdown, and you'll see a column there that says smart score. It's that first column. And it lists the proficiency or mastery level of that student's skills. And specifically, that previous report showed that twenty-six percent of the practice skills were not yet proficient or mastered. That was actually seven specific skills. And those seven skills, excuse me, I'm going backward here. Those seven skills are listed on here, and so, for example, identify time order words. That student has a forty-eight. Identify base words, that student has a fifty-nine. If we were to click on that fifty-nine smart score, then it would open up a graph showing since that child began studying that skill and working towards mastery of that skill, this chart outlines their progress. And you can see the kind of progress that they're making. If they're having difficulty, the teacher can go a little bit further and dig down, and they can see specific questions that the child has answered. They can see what the question asked, what the correct answer was, and what the child answered. And then they can address that skill specifically. And if they can, if they have multiple children who are having difficulty with that skill, they can put them into subgroups, and then they can work together with just that group of students in what's called a group jam. And so, that's what iXL calls it. So, basically, a group jam is, you can specifically assign that topic to the kids that are having trouble, and you can work on it with them while the other students are working on mastery of other skills. So, the tool's been actually very nice to work with. It allows us to get a little bit more granular about what they need to work on. So, that's just a little bit about the iXL report.
Any questions about that? You saw a piece of that in your notes, but that took, I thought it was important to see the individual scoring of it, because that's really where the meat of the product is. That's what we do. And so, it allows the teacher to see certain skill sets to know what exactly they need to correct, and then go back and reteach for mastery. So, to me, that's more beneficial. I make a note in my notes too, and I don't know if you're gonna pull Schoollytics up as well. Let me just finish this, and I want you to see another mechanism we're using to track kids. But they take the spring testing, we do it every year, we just finished it. Mr. Roder is here, he's our district testing coordinator. Likely, we won't get those results back for a while. So, therefore, the evidence that we get from those really don't help us strategize in terms of what individual students need, which is why benchmarking is so important. We're gonna go into Escolytics, he's gonna show you how we have data that would suggest things like chronic absenteeism. As you all are probably aware, the report card will come out. Chronic absenteeism is still a tracked piece of evidence that lends itself to our report card grade. As you know, that also is in the parents' hands, so it's pretty difficult, and we encourage it. We have developed some strategies in order to get kids at school, but ultimately, the parents have to choose to bring them. So, if you've got Schoollytics.
Yeah, so, to kind of give you an idea of what Schoollytics is, Schoollytics started out as a data dashboard for teachers who were using Google Classroom. Jay was one of our people that used it a lot when he was associated with the virtual school, and he still uses it. But Schoollytics has now turned into a data dashboard. And the benefit that it gives districts, the reason that we really wanted it, we had been talking for years about trying to put together a dashboard that would pull data from our student information system, and iXL, and NWA, and other, you know, different programs. Because when you're trying to crunch that data in terms of who's here, who's not, you know, why are they absent, how are they performing, how are these specific subgroups of kids performing, it's difficult to get that data when you're trying to pull it from multiple systems. So, Schoollytics pulls from those systems, and it aggregates the data for us. So, this is kind of a, for example, of what it can do. By the way, we've only had this for a few months. We've been working with the developer, who's on our team at Schoollytics, and anytime we have a question and say, "We'd really like it to do this," we just email him, and he's got it the next day. So, they've been working with us, and we're gonna try to roll this out more fully during the leadership retreat. But to give you an example, this is what an attendance summary would look like. And so, that wheel that you're seeing there would allow you to see which kids are satisfactory, at risk, moderately chronically absent, or extremely chronically absent. And from here, what principals can do is they can click on that red piece of the pie, or piece of the wheel there, and when they click on that, it tells them which kids are in that extreme chronic category. And so, that, from there, that gives them a list of kids that they can kind of work with. You know, as we said, the difficulty about that is, is there's only so much a school can do, but at least we know which parents to be having the conversation with. So, that's one of the things that this can do. And then, of course, you see on here, the little graph on the right that just shows the daily attendance, and that's across the board. That is actually a little low, so one of the things that we're working with Schoollytics on is making sure that it's reporting active enrolled students and getting that number right. So, that's one of the things that we've emailed them about recently. But in addition to that, subgroups, when we do the civil rights data collection, or when we pull data for specific grants that we might be writing, sometimes they ask questions like, "How are all female gifted students who are also on IEP performing?" for example. That's a very difficult thing to glean. And so, we can actually have subgroups set up. One of the subgroups that we had set up inside Schoollytics, actually, I got ahead myself, I think. No, I didn't. Is the after-school program. We really wanted to see if having an after-school program is going to have the enrichment, the impact of enrichment that we expected to have. You would expect that if kids are getting additional enrichment at the end of the day, that they would perform better on their benchmarks and on their state exams. And so, one of the things that we're seeing here is, and again, we just started using this, but the orange, these last two graphs that you see here, I can't really point it out, but on the far right, you've got the winter benchmark, and then the spring benchmark. And you can see that in the after-school program, kids outperformed non-after-school program kids. The after-school is in orange, the non-after-school is in blue. And so, we start to see little trends like that that are happening this year, and we're noticing that the after-school programs having an impact. But we can do that with other things. We can also isolate kids that are on a 504 or an IEP. We can dissociate data by gender, by race, any way that we really want to. We just ask Schoollytics to develop that chart, and then they can put it together for us, so.
So, I would just add to the commentary, we just started after-school, well, summer programs now, but currently, we're running summer programs in essentially every site, with the exception of ECEC. Pratt Camp, which is actually housed at Angus this year because of work being done at Pratt, is the last of the ESAR-funded program. Everyone else is supported by Twenty First Century Grant Program. So, when I start talking about the hope of getting the third concurrent program, that's what it does. And so, we know, data-wise, kids that attend those after-school or summer programs are set up to do better than they would ordinarily if they didn't have that support. So, that's been a kind of a breath of fresh air to actually see the data in a format that you can actually interpret, and Sean's done a really great job. I don't have the data, I'm gonna pitch it on the spot. Do you have any idea how many kids we're serving this summer?
I do not.
Nope. So, I need to forward that data to you, but Claudia would have a really good perspective of that. This is day one, this is Monday, day one of the program, so we don't have numbers yet.
And with all the wonderful weather we had with it too.
Oh, yeah, with the rain, for sure. And we're providing transportation, too. So, if parents want to take advantage of it, it is totally free. I think one of you asked me that question, do the parents pay? And the answer is no. And we provide transportation. So, there really is no reason for a child, if they want to take advantage, not to access those programs, which is exciting. So, anything else you'd want to add or ask?
Speaking to what you just said specifically, in the past, we used to charge for after-school programs at ECEC, and if we get that third grant, we won't have to do that anymore.
Right.
So, that's a big boon. And, you know, while there is a cap on how many students we can serve, it's still a large enough cap that, like she said, there's no excuse for kids not to take advantage of that if they want to. And so, it's been a wonderful program. Jamie Conrad and Laura Huffaker have been working really hard to get that started. And I will say, other than the complaints about the rain, we heard not one single issue today. It went off without a hitch, so, as it always does with Jamie, so.
Absolutely. So, any questions for Sean? Just to kind of give you a dip into the real work that happens consistently at our school sites to make sure kids are achieving. Sean, thank you. Three fifty to four hundred children. That's a big deal in a school our size, I think, so.
Three fifty to four hundred, thank you.
Yeah.
I was saying it for YouTube world.
You're welcome. Somebody is out in the audience phoning a friend. Sean, what else did you say? Oh, Donors Choose, and that's in, so, say a little bit about that. I know there was a link in your actual agenda, and so, it's in the consent area. And as you know, our, oh, that's fabulous. Our teachers must submit those grants so that you can see them flow in every year. But I always am astounded when we hand out the awards at the end of the year, the amount of money that teachers on their own apply for, which is kind of cool. So, this is a single source called Donors Choose, you guys have heard of that. And they send us a nice piece of data at the end of every year. So, Sean, if you want to talk about that, that'd be great.
So, they try to give us, they used to do this like quarterly, but now they do it every week now, I found out. It's kind of interesting to get this email. The top left, or at the top right, you'll see four boxes there. The very top left box basically is saying that since we've been using Donors Choose two thousand eight forward, we've raised four hundred and three thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars. The way Donors Choose works, if you don't know, teachers will go onto Donors Choose, they will list a project, and they'll explain, you know, how the project could impact their students, and then the amount of the requests that they have. And then, what Donors Choose does is they try to put matching donors with the project. Now, anybody can go to donorschoose.org, so if anybody that's listening wants to donate, you just go to their website, you can look at the projects, and you can donate whatever you want to. But sometimes, they do matching grants with like the Gates Foundation, or somebody like that. And then, during specific times of the year, they'll double whatever is put forth by one donor. Donors Choose will then double that match. And so, what's been interesting, as you can see, for the longest time there, we were fairly stable until about twenty eighteen, and then that year, we had forty-two thousand dollars in grants written, and then it dipped again. And then, between twenty-one and twenty-two, it doubled to, from nineteen thousand to forty-one thousand. And then, from twenty-three to twenty-four, it went from forty-four thousand to a hundred and three thousand this year. So, this is our biggest year in terms of requests and funds that were raised and contributed. So, our teachers are, that made the list, by the way, of award recipients at last week's assembly really long.
It was super long, but worth it, because, you know, we decided quite a while ago when we did our CSI plan my first year, that we were gonna reward people for going out and trying to glean money that wasn't part of Fund XI, so.
But all they got was a certificate, they didn't get a five dollar gift card.
There's no gift card.
I told her, but.
No, it didn't happen. That's a good thing. So, questions for Sean? He's working hard alongside our leadership team to be the curriculum leads that they need to be at the buildings. Okay, moving on, since we met last time, we've had Page graduation, award ceremony, and we've also had Charles Page High School graduation, which went off, I thought, fabulously. Stan's commentary, I found to be a little bit humorous, to say the least. And you saw Matt Brown here deliver the, or at least speak about the baseball players, but now he's, you know, taking the job of assistant principal for the high school next year. And of course, Waddy's slithered out without speaking, but he, you know, is gonna be the high school baseball coach. That's good. Under item thirteen on the board agenda, you're gonna see updated salary schedules for administrators and teachers. Just know, and I know you know this, but we're recommending two additional steps added to the admin scale and an additional one percent district paid teacher retirement, which will increase our retirement burden for the teachers to two percent. So, we're gonna ask the board to approve that tonight. We are in the middle of planning professional development for the start of the school year. We have a few teachers that are signed up to do Project Lead the Way training this summer, which is a very comprehensive program in order to be able to teach our science curriculum and the STEM offerings at Charles Page High School. And I think that probably sums, unless you have questions, teacher and student empowerment.
Any questions, comments? Okay, we'll move on.
Number six has to do with district finance. I always include facility updates in this one. For now, state revenue seems to be holding, that's always good news, meaning that we won't be reliving two thousand eighteen when there was a revenue failure. So, you also need to know, we're planning a flat budget for next year. It looks like the legislature has put additional twenty-five plus million dollars into the state funding formula. We won't actually have our allocations until mid-July, mid to end July. We are expecting an additional seven hundred and thirteen thousand roughly in additional Red Bud money, which, as you know, contributes to our ability to keep our facilities up and running. You may see a slight decline in our carryover balance. We're still closing encumbrances and doing some pencil to paper. So, not there yet, but I know when Mr. Wyon presents the first budget, the original budget for twenty-five, you'll see a little teeny bit of dip in our budget carryover. Just know that that's, a lot of it's due to one-time purchases that we were able to use this year. So, not worried about that. I can't say enough about Cassidy, he's doing a great job. He's like a spud, learning so fast. As you know, we had a revenue lease and a bond election. So, we have GO and revenue lease, which is a lot to comprehend in a short period of time, but he's doing beautifully. Zach Robinson continues to be that just wealth of information and has the how-tos. So, it's not easy, but it's certainly a tremendous help. And of course, Mr. Watts has been incredible, too. We talked about budgets and teachers and Donors Choose and all that. Just know, our ESAR funds are set to expire. In fact, we have to have those encumbered and spent by September. We're looking to carry over about fifteen thousand, which is dropping a bucket in comparison to the number of dollars we received over the past four years. We will be, I think, spending our last little bit on some math software to just reinforce math facts, to be honest, in the elementary school. to, um, just reinforce math facts, to be honest, in the elementary school. And then, um, just had a pretty lengthy discussion with Mike Carter. We should re, receive the city's contribution to our Admin Plaza area, a project, pretty shortly. And that work's set to begin July second. So, as noted in my notes and in the agenda, we will be having a ribbon-cutting. Lisa's done some invitations for our folks, um, on July first, which is the date of our next board meeting, um, at five-thirty, inviting the public to come, so. Unless you have questions, I think that concludes item number six. Item number seven? Well, that's a great question. I'm gonna assume that it's gonna be on the south end. I'm not sure how much ground is diggable at that point. But, yes, I think it's kind of, the, to do it in front of the old part is probably a good picturesque opportunity as kind of a last time we'll see that facade after the summer. So, I mean, of course, the first thing to happen is the demolition of our old office building, the gym and the Julia Martin. So, should be pretty fun, um, in the hot summer, July heat.
I was gonna say, can we have sledgehammers instead of shovels?
That's actually a really good idea. I need to let, I'm kind of, sledgehammers are scary, I think. You've done ha, really? Oh, my goodness, maybe then. Cause they ask how many shovels, and the city council's gonna have to have one, so. Come on, I want the big ones. Might be necessary. Yeah, well, we'd have to build a real one, which is a little dangerous. Let's see. Could be part of the demolition. That needs to go, that totally needs to go. We still have one fireplace, by the way, in this building that we're gonna save for at least as long as I'm here. And it's in the, you've seen it in the break, break room down the hall. So, they shall be continuing, I guess. Okay, number seven, if you guys are ready to move on. Um, this is about families and communities. Um, one of the things maybe I'm the most proud of, it's kind of a combination in this section and also in the health and safety one, is our new contract with Daybreak. Um, you'll see a revision of that contract. We actually approved that last month. But there was some language that they felt like needed to be clarified in that Family and Children Services is really that large umbrella that includes Daybreak. So, they're working in tandem, which is really great. So, um, what's happening is Daybreak will continue as usual with the services they provide in counseling. We have at least two counselors in every school site, which has been phenomenal. But what the partnership does is adds what they're calling a family coordinator and a behavior aide in most of our sites. Family coordinator, I believe, will be in every one of them. I think they're committing right now to three behavior aides, um, at our elementary sites in addition to the services that we already have. So, we are completely ecstatic about that possibility. Um, we're begging for more. I know they're in the process of hiring, but we sat down with their team last week just to talk through. Clint's still gonna be the Sand Springs guy. He's gonna office in Tulsa, but he's gonna be the one that helps coordinate services here. But it's just this wraparound kind of model, whereas families can get support from that agency really twenty-four-seven. That's kinda what the family coordinator, uh, does. And then, they actually hire people that have lived through the same kind of scenarios that our families are currently, um, which creates the, they have to be approved, by the way, and there's a process. But gives them just a, kind of a comrade, if you will, of someone that understands what they're going through. So, we are totally excited about that partnership. Um, let's see, groundbreaking, already talked about. And then, also Clyde Boyd, um, as you have, know, we're gonna be starting the work for the bus loop, um, pretty quickly. In fact, Josh is here to talk about that. I know those bids are on our agenda, but where are, the plan is June the tenth, I think, for the Boyd work starts a week from today. Okay, okay, gotcha. So, it's gonna happen pretty quick, so people at Boyd will be able to see that work, uh, happening. We were, Mr. Mullins will appreciate this. We were talking about how to dress up the new building. We were thinking maybe some sort of Daktronics, Jumbo Tron facing west. That was one of the ideas that we had, and I said, "Mr. Mullins wouldn't like that." I was, it was a joke, but we would be turning that off, so we won't be doing that, but. True, yeah, and more, and more. So, that, all that work's gonna start really quickly. And I think just a symbol of, and a, and a show to our community that we're doing what we say we're gonna do. So, very excited about that.
Timeline?
Timeline, golly. So, I hate to commit to, so this project, I'm gonna speak out of turn, Josh should correct me if I'm wrong, but we're looking for April-ish next year for this to be complete. Definitely before the summer is what we're hoping, this one. And then Clyde Boyd Middle School, we won't open up until twenties, the fall of twenty seven, hang on. Twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six, the fall of twenty-six. So, we talked about an eighteen-month plan, which really sets us into December through March. So, it's probably not a good idea to open up a new school in the spring, or so we'll wait till the following year. Uh, and the truth is, it needs to be done right. And so, we're, I think it's important that we give them the time to do what they need to do. Uh, construction docs aren't gonna be ready for bid until the fall semester. And hopefully, I know what we talked about, my recollection is a break-ground date of November-ish of this year. So, of the building, the actual building itself. And so, there'll be a second groundbreaking, and that will be later on, when the actual building.
So, you're looking at two years.
Yes.
From, open it up in, in two years.
Correct. Yeah, that's correct. So, lots of fun stuff.
So, the YouTubers out there, they can, you know, the kids can get excited, they can plan.
I know, they will, they will get it. It's so exciting. I think the kids are ready, and they're, the ones that have been there are kind of sad that they're not getting to partake, but, yeah. Um, and then, I think that's it for that area, unless you guys have questions.
My niece will just miss it, she's like.
I know, sorry. I will say, Mr. Mullins had asked yesterday about the, uh, proposal to purchase the gym from the Methodist Church. We just haven't had time, honestly, to really delve into it. And so, Mike Stockard, who's an elder at the Methodist Church, has been super patient. We are meeting with Eric Nelson from RFAR on June the sixteen, no, that's wrong, the fourteenth, just to kinda go through the legality and how that works. They really wanna avoid using a Realtor for obvious reasons, and we do, too. I still think it's a great recommendation just because of the value of the gym, the immediacy of the gym, because that would cost a cool two million just to build that, not including the land that it sits on. So, um, we'll get the druthers worked out about that. I'll be sending you guys information so you can make a educated decision about the purchase of that property. Again, that's land acquisition out of building fund. We are carrying over enough money to pay for it out of this year's monies, which is great. And then, of course, you know that we glean about two-point-four million-ish in building fund to accommodate anything else that we might need alongside the GO bond that helps us provide maintenance and care of our facilities, too. So, we're sitting really well, I think, financially, um, which is a great place to be, to be honest. So, we'll talk through that in detail, and you'll get, you know, blind copy emails that I send, uh, try to send them weekly, um, with some more updated information about that, for sure. So, any questions about finance, facility? Um, health and safety schools, J.J. Smith, he needs to be commended. It's such an effort, but they have their last meeting in, in May. Begins the work of the summer, um, facilities request. Mr. Bynum's in the room, and he's already been on that effort. And then, really, the big health, safety-related piece really is about Daybreak and Family and Children Services, which I've already talked about. It is just, we're so excited. Just so you know, the contract is in this, uh, agenda. We are still committing fifteen thousand dollars for Daybreak to continue full-time counseling at Page Academy, which is cheap, cheap, cheap in comparison to what we're getting for that amount of money. And, um, it enables us for students that apply to go to Page Academy Alternative School to say, "You have to partake in those services in order to come." It's not unusual for us to have a waiting list for that program. And as you know, we graduated forty-one students this year, which is amazing. So, very proud of that program. And I think that the full-time counselor that was sitting on stage with us at graduation was a big piece of the why. Questions?
I enjoyed seeing J.J. at the graduation.
Oh, for sure, for sure. It was so good. By the way, the Page Academy graduation, I don't know if you noticed, but all four of our Charles Page High School counselors came. Um, it was interesting because I noticed the kids would talk to them as they walked by. But even though those counselors aren't in-body at Page Academy every day, they're intimately involved in those connections. So, they're the ones that are helping them get support, apply, and then advocating for them to get into that program. So, I was, that was really kinda nice to see them all engaged there, so. Any other questions or comments? We'll move on to the consent. Consent agenda, um, there's a lot of contracts. Those contracts are ones that are recurring. I'm gonna point out a couple of things that you need to be aware of. Um, I, first of all, on item number thirteen, uh, letters E and F, those are the salary schedules that I mentioned. Those are on the treasures report alongside the closing memo for the, the bonds that we just sold back in April. Item number eighteen does, uh, document the groundbreaking. It is at five-thirty, which is not listed on the agenda. So, we'll make sure we get that out to everyone, so the public can come. Of course, nineteen is just a listing additionally of those Donors Choose grants, too. Let's see. Item number twenty-eight, I would bring that up to your attention. That would be the agreement with Family and Children Services that is incorporating, uh, Daybreak for those wraparound services that we've been discussing, discussing. Um, twenty-nine, those are first read. You'll see those as second read next month. Those are just revised policies, mostly cleanup language, um, from OSSBA. And just added some language, like for instance, letter A clarifies or corrects our website. It's not a K-12.org anymore, it's Sandites. And so, we just had some cleanup. Those are pretty easy, but let you kinda read through those in preparation for voting those next month. And then, um, item number thirty-six is really just that one time per year. The board by law must approve chronic absenteeism waiver request, which means that those are kids that were chronically absent for a reason. That's, I guess, a legitimate reason to be absent, and that has to be board-approved, uh, before it's calculated into our testing scores. And then, I believe that would be really most of the new stuff, unless you have questions.
Yeah, can you, uh, what is item twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven? Twenty-seven? Oh, yeah, so we, on item number twenty-seven, that's approval of our AltEd inter-local cooperative. So, we run the lead, we're the lead agency, meaning LEA, for our alternative education program. So, it's an inter-local cooperative. And so, we have four schools that partner with us, which means we get their AltEd funding, and they're able to send a certain number of students each year. The truth is, it's very rare, to be honest, that we have a child that would transition to our alternative school from any of those four, but they could. So, Prue, Sperry, Barry Hill, and Anderson are willing to forfeit their allocation for AltEd to our program for that reason.
For them to come to Page Academy, basically.
Correct, that's correct.
Thank you.
Good question. I believe that's new. We usually have three. It's interesting because we have inter-local co-ops with AltEd, but we used to have one. In fact, this year, we had it with Title III as well, because our Title III population was never large enough to, um, allow us to have our own grant. And this year, our EL population's grown to the extent that we're able to not be in a co-op to actually have our own grant program. So, um, inter-locals are based. I think we're, oh, there we are. That don't have the capacity to do those by themselves. Hello? I think all of us went off. Sorry about that.
And I just have a technical question about the chronic absenteeism waivers. Are those that, that do have the approved waiver, are they calculated into the total absenteeism? Are those?
Those are segregated. Jay, I'll let you answer that question.
So, those that are approved, those absences are removed from the student. So, ideally, you get enough taken out that that student would no longer be considered chronically absent. So, then, when the school report card grade comes around, that student's not calculated in as being chronically absent. So, it improves your term score.
Okay, okay, thanks. So, do you have to bring a doctor's note for it to be approved?
Yeah, doctor's note alone will not get it approved.
Okay.
It has to be something that is substantial. So, a life-threatening illness, an injury that can be considered life-threatening or severe, uh, things that are not predictable, uh, just a recurring, a recurring doctor's appointment is not something that would get that thrown out. It has to be something that is substantial, that happens and, and usually unforeseen.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Jay. Any other questions about the consent agenda?
Do I have a motion?
I'll move that we approve the consent agenda.
One second.
I have a motion and a second vote, please. Mullins?
Aye.
Hanlon?
Aye.
Noggle?
Aye.
Wagers?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Onto our action items. I think for the very first one, it's on the public hearing of our district budget. Sand Springs Public Schools operates under the School Budget Act. We are now required to conduct a public hearing on the budget. Does anyone wish to comment on the budget? Going once, going twice? If not, we will close the public hearing, and the CFO will brief the board on the budget. Take it away.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner. You should have packets in front of you with the proposed twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five budget. I do wanna start off by thanking Superintendent Durkey and Mr. Gary Watts for their support throughout the entire budget process. Mr. Watts and I have been spending hours verifying, adjusting, and attempting to perfect, uh, each line of this original budget, uh, which is very difficult to do on the original budget without having all of the numbers beforehand, so. But I do wanna say thank you to both Superintendent Durkey and Mr. Watts for that support. So, without further ado, let's start on general fund. So, general fund revenue, our Fund Eleven, um, our budget is forty-five point seven million for, uh, year twenty-four, twenty-five. This is a decrease of about five-hundred-and-twenty thousand from the second revised for year twenty-three, twenty-four, and an increase of, uh, around one-point-four million from our actual revenues for year twenty-two, twenty-three, as you can see. Um, our beginning fund balance projection is around five-point-nine-seven-five million. Um, as Superintendent Durkey mentioned, this could change as we start to shore up some of those, um, encumbered amounts and those unencumbered balances, uh, as we wrap up the school year. Uh, this is showing stability fro, for year twenty-three, from year twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, and like I said, this is a best-educated estimate at this point. So, we'll be able to narrow this down as we go throughout the year into the first and second revised budgets. We like those reserves, but it's also a delicate balance with, uh, the cap in Fund Eleven as well. So, it appears that the state has agreed on a three-point-eight-six billion-dollar budget for public ed for year twenty-four, twenty-five. Um, and as Superintendent Durkey mentioned, uh, the education funding formula is projected to go up by about twenty-five million, um, for this coming school year as well. Are there any questions on the revenue side of Fund Eleven? All right. If you'll turn to the expenditures, just the next page. The budget for this is forty-six point four million for year twenty-four, twenty-five. It's a decrease of three-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand from the second revised budget from year twenty-three, twenty-four, this current year, and an increase of around four-point-four million, uh, from the actual expenditures for last year, twenty-two. uh, from the actual expenditures for last year, twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, the expenses from ESAR and ARP funds, uh, have transitioned back to other district funds uh, as this is the end of those COVID funds. Um, as such, we've reflected this in the budget. Um, instruction is the biggest difference in the budget with some new positions being added and being able to pay the two percent of the teachers Oklahoma teacher retirement, uh, which we are very proud of and thankful you voted to approve this, uh, earlier on in this meeting as well. So that wraps up the expenditure side of Fund eleven. Do you have any questions on the expenditure side?
I would, I would just add one comment in terms of the increase of four point four million from the twenty-three budget. Those are actuals, you guys, and if you'll remember, this was the, that was because of teacher raises. So they had those, um, it was six thousand, five thousand, four thousand, it was generated down depending on years of experience. Um, but that was an incre, accounted for some of the increase, and then we also gave support raises as well. So just know, um, the legislature added some funding, but also it came with, uh, specific, uh, reason, and that was teacher raises. So just wanted to make mention of that.
Yeah, that's a good point. That explains that inflated, there are the appearance of an inflated amount from twenty-two, twenty-three to what we're proposing for this coming year. So. Okay, on to co-op fund, Fund twelve. So the co-op fund stays pretty consistent. There's not a lot to go over here. Um, it stays consistent with, uh, when comparing to years, year twenty-two, twenty-three. Total revenue is projected, uh, to be three hundred and seventy-six thousand with the fiscal year budget being close to three hundred and sixty-five thousand. Um, like I said, it's very consistent with prior years. Um, and when we look at what's been encumbered to date, and that's what we have to look at right now prior to us officially closing out the year. Fund twelve is a pretty short fund compared to eleven and some of the other ones, so. All right, if you'll turn to the building fund, which is our Fund twenty-one. The building fund has approximately two million included in expenditures for the possible land acquisition, uh, that Superintendent Dur, Superintendent Durkey mentioned previously. Um, that's coded as forty-two hundred, if you're looking for that on there. Uh, we also built in the one million dollar donation from the city as refact, as reflected in the coding eleven forty on the revenue at the top, and then on forty-three hundred on expenditures. Uh, and this is essentially a pass-through when we're looking at it on the budget because we'll receive it in on revenue, and then it exits right out on expenditures. So. But we wanted to reflect that on both the top and bottom of the building fund budget.
Because we will be utilizing that money this summer, it was super important to get that on the original budget because as you know, if the board doesn't approve, we don't expend. So. Had to show that.
The last thing I would add to the building fund is that we're projecting a beginning balance of around one point eight million. Um, that could change a little bit as we start to close things up. Um, uh, but that's compared to our prior year, uh, second revised budget of two million. So very close to the second revised for this past year as well. If there's no questions, then we'll move on to child nutrition. Sure. Uh, yes, it does. That would be under, I believe that would be under the three thousand where it says the one point four. And we're still waiting on the second, um, allocation of that red bud.
So one point four million under, um, state revenue three thousand, yeah.
Yeah. So child nutrition is our Fund twenty-two. Uh, much like Fund twelve, uh, this, it stays pretty consistent from year to year. Um, revenues and expenditures, uh, we have a total revenue projection of three point nine million and a total expenditure projection near three point three million. And, uh, Ms. Sherry Pearson, the Director of Child Nutrition, helped a lot with that side of things. Uh, so I appreciate her help as well.
I think it's important to keep in mind on this one is this particular program is self-sufficient, meaning we don't utilize state and local monies to subsidize child nutrition. So it stands alone.
If there's no questions on child nutrition? Yes. Where were you looking at again? I'm sorry.
That's correct.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Yeah, there was that year, but we, we don't see one for the second revised budget for this current year. And we don't expect that big of a carryover for, uh, this come, this, for the year twenty-four, twenty-five as well. It's a good, that's a good catch. All right, on the next page, you'll see the bond funds, which include thirty-one through thirty-nine. So thirty-one is our transportation, um, as our bond fund dedicated for transportation. Thirty-two through thirty-nine are used for our bonds that, uh, we, we add or that roll off. So, uh, thirty-two will be rolling off, and then thirty-seven will be our new bond fund for this coming school year. Uh, Fund thirty-seven, uh, we had two good faith wires deposited on April twenty-fifth totaling a hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred dollars. Uh, we expect to receive the remaining, uh, six point one six million at closing early this month. I believe that's on the sixth, if I remember right from Zach. And then the rest of it is just a reflection of our past bonds that we're still spending on, uh, in conjunction with this new bond fund as well. So. And that's the general obligation piece of that, the six point one six million. The next page is our sinking fund, Fund forty-one. Uh, this is just simply our debt service fund for our bonds. Uh, nothing changes significantly here. Uh, Zach Robinson from BOK helped tremendously in addition to Mr. Watts as well. But, uh, when it comes to the sinking fund, this is just our obligation to, uh, pay back those bond debts.
Are the debt service rates all fixed?
Um, I, I don't believe they are.
They're not fixed. Yeah, yeah.
So he can give us what it is for this coming year, but then projecting it out?
Well, it's dependent on interest rates upon sales, too. So, yeah.
And then our last page would be, uh, the gift fund and the insurance fund. The gift fund doesn't change a whole lot as far as original budgets go from year to year on what we project. Uh, the insurance fund, you do see, or you can see, uh, decreases significantly. And, uh, frankly, we hope it stays that way because that was from the windstorm last year. So, um, that revenue that came in was from our O-SIG payments that, uh, we were getting to try to fix things. So that's the huge difference between the second revised for twenty-three, twenty-four versus what we're projecting, hopefully, for twenty-four, twenty-five.
Subject to change via emergency meeting. Let's pray that doesn't happen.
We hope it doesn't change.
Right.
And that wraps up the original budget for twenty-four, twenty-five.
Of course, the last page was what was published in the Tulsa World, too. It's part of what our legal responsibility is to make sure it's published in the paper publicly. Thank you, Mr. Wine.
Thank you very much. That was very helpful, especially the summary was great.
Okay.
Chair, may I make a motion? We approve the, uh, budget for twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second vote, please.
Mullins?
Aye.
Hanlon?
Aye.
Noggle?
Aye.
Wagers?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Let's see, number forty-four.
So forty-four is the resolution to join the insurance group as, um, prescribed by that group. We have to join the group, and then we get to look at the liability insurance quote. So forty-four is just a simple resolution to join O-SIG.
I'll make a motion. We approve item forty-four as stated.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second vote, please.
Mullins?
Aye.
Hanlon?
Aye.
Noggle?
Aye.
Wagers?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
So to say that we only had an eleven percent increase feels ridiculous, to be honest. Um, after last year's twenty-six percent increase, I feel pretty good about it. Um, we have, uh, we kind of looked at how much we pay in premium versus how much we've received in O-SIG money, and unfortunately, we're receiving more than we're paying in. So I suppose it's one way to look at life when you're dealing with disaster and insurance acquisition. But nonetheless, it is higher. It's at one point almost two million dollars for liability and, um, casualty, property, all of those things, insurance and auto. So it has increased. Um, one of my not favorite, but I feel like one of this, the, um, pictorial representation of the incredible weather we have in Oklahoma, there was a, a photo. I think Kristin maybe even had a T-shirt, but it was the state of Oklahoma, and it showed, um, the occurrences of weather, you know, things in this, really the country, but Oklahoma is like the epicenter of all of those things. And so the short definition of why our insurance premiums are so high, um, would be that very thing. We pay a lot of claims. Um, I will say, after, I don't know, two or three years that I was superintendent and O-Smart ended up shutting down. I was very thankful we were a member of the O-SIG group because as we have claims, we know, we're assured that they're going to get taken care of, which is great. Again, just really hoping for some really decent, um, weather this year, at least in the city of Sands Springs. We've had some friends and neighbors that haven't been so lucky um, over the course of this spring, and it seems to be kind of this occurrence that happens every year, more so than it has happened in the past. So.
I'll make a motion to approve the renewal quote with O-SIG.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second vote, please.
Mullins?
Aye.
Hanlon?
Aye.
Noggle?
Aye.
Wagers?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Okay, so, um, item number forty-six is about O-SAG, also a group. This one has to do with workman's compensation. So, um, our annual premium, while it has increased over time, not nearly as severely as, of course, our property and liability insurance. And so it is a hundred and nine thousand? I don't think that's representing, oh, saving members over a hundred and nine thousand. Like, what in the world? No. It's not nearly as expensive as our O-SIG, a hundred and sixty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars you see on page two for workman's comp. Yeah.
Do we know how many claims we had this past?
Oh, that's a great question. Kristin, how many workman's comp claims have we had? Three? It's not much. It's enough that it makes you kind of have heartburn a little bit, to be honest, but it's been pretty small. I think maybe three this year. Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the renewal quote for workers' compensation insurance with O-SAG.
Second.
I have a motion and a second vote, please.
Mullins?
Aye.
Hanlon?
Aye.
Noggle?
Aye.
Wagers?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
And if the board sees fit my approved or my contract for, uh, this year, or next year, or the next following three years as, uh, allowed by laws on the, on, on item forty-seven?
I'll make a motion. We approve item forty-seven.
I'm happy to second.
Thank you.
I have a motion and a second vote, please.
Mullins?
Aye.
Hanlon?
Aye.
Noggle?
Aye.
Wagers?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Item forty-eight, these are, um, revised policies for library media. Sean can answer questions, but these were, I believe, first read last time. There's some cleanup on library media, selection materials, reevaluation of those materials. They're pretty minor, to be honest. Um, I think we revised these back in twenty-two. Um, so just some cleanup language on those.
I'll make a motion to approve the following revised policies as listed in A, B, and C.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second vote, please.
Mullins?
Aye.
Hanlon?
Aye.
Noggle?
Aye.
Wagers?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
So item forty-nine and fifty, both are motions to consider, uh, district paid employer pickup contribution to teachers retirement. One is for administrators and one is for teachers. Uh, per our, uh, recommendation of our attorney, we have to read this resolution aloud for each of those items. Um, and again, it allows us to be able to have our administrators, um, but for OTRS to look at that as income, which helps them at retirement when they actually retire as part of their income. So we would have you actually read those motions.
Or who is classified as a mandatory participant in Oklahoma teacher retirement system, the OTRS, such administrator's mandatory contribution to the OTRS. I move that each administrator shall not have any right to make a cash or deferred election with respect to the contributions being paid by the school district pursuant to these resolutions that would otherwise be required to be paid by such administrators. I move that participating employees must not be permitted to opt out of the pickup contributions. In other words, the employee contributions which the school district is paying on their behaves or to receive the contrib, contributed funds that constitute the pickup contributions directly instead of having those funds being paid by the school district to the OTRS.
Second.
I have a motion and a second vote, please.
Mullins?
Aye.
Hanlon?
Aye.
Noggle?
Aye.
Wagers?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
And I'll do number fifty. I move effective July first, twenty twenty-four, that the school district commits to pay for each teacher who is a mandatory participant in the Oklahoma teacher retirement system, OTRS, a two percent contribution of such teacher's mandatory contribution to OTRS. I move that each teacher shall not have any right to make a cash or deferred election with respect to the contributions being paid by the school district pursuant to these resolutions that would otherwise be required to be paid by such teachers. I move that participating employees must not be permitted to opt out of the pickup contributions, such as the employee contrib, contributions which the school district is paying on their behaves or to receive the contributed, the contributed funds that constitute the pickup contributions directly instead of having those funds being paid by the school district to OTRS.
Second.
I have a motion and a second vote, please.
Mullins?
Aye.
Hanlon?
Aye.
Noggle?
Aye.
Wagers?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Okay, item fifty-one, thank you for that, you guys. Item fifty-one is a, kind of a redo on the generator bid from last month. If you recall, um, we actually approved generators at all sites. Um, Ms. Cavach, um, upon discovery that it was going to require more than just plugging in a generator, that we were going to have to do some work that would constitute us being able to plug in the generator system upgrades with our electric. Um, we discovered quickly that that labor was going to be more than what was allowed by the Competitive Bidding Act. And so we went out to competitive bid on those projects, and we're asking the board to approve a hundred and eighty-five thousand, uh, paid with bond funds to, um, generators at maintenance and then at Charles Page High School. So those are our two largest ones. Um, picking those because that's where the largest bulk of food storage is happening. Um, if you'll remember, last year in June, when the electric, the storm happened, we were working like crazy to get the stuff out of the freezer to preserve the food. Um, so those two are the, what we think are the most important ones, and we're asking board approval for those, those.
I move to accept bid for district generators and contract to lowest and responsible bidder, the Watts Company, a total of a hundred and eighty-five thousand, sixty dollars.
Second.
I have a motion and a second vote, please.
Mullins?
Aye.
Hanlon?
Aye.
Noggle?
Aye.
Wagers?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Item number fifty-two is the last time you will see this board item for action appear on an agenda, and this is the sublease agreement that was first developed between us and the Tulsa County Industrial Industrial, Industrial Authority in 2010 for the purpose of building Northwood Fine Arts Academy. And we will make our last payment this year. Yeah, so good, so good. However, we still need to make that motion to approve the sublease.
I'll make a motion we approve item 52 as stated.
I'll second. A motion and a second vote, please. Mullins?
Aye.
Hanlon?
Aye.
Noggle?
Aye.
Wagers?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Item 53 is the same, except that this is the sublease agreement that was agreed upon in 2019 for the purpose of the freshman academy and STEM, STEM center. We'll have a couple more times on our board agenda for this one, but we'd ask you to approve this, the renewal of the sublease agreement.
I'll make that motion, Madam Chairman.
I'll second.
A motion and a second vote, please. Mullins?
Aye.
Hanlon?
Aye.
Noggle?
Aye.
Wagers?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Item number 55 is the re, the proposed reemployment of recommended temporary teachers for the '24, '25 school year. And I, I'm, you skipped, did I skip? I did, 54. We do want the certified teachers too. We want those. Both of those items though, you guys, I have to say, commend Kristin Arnold and her staff. And when I say her staff, I'm meaning Kim Clanny, because they spend an inordinate amount of time making sure those lists are clean to the nth degree. Doesn't mean that someone later is not going to resign and we're going to have to accept those resignations, but this allows you all to basically seal the deal on the teachers that were rehiring for the school year that are continued employees. So to, not to belabor it, 54 is about administrators, certified teachers in support. And then 55 has to be a separate item, that's for temporary teachers that would continue temporary employment for the '24, '25 school year.
I'll move to approve the reemployment of recommended administrators, certified teachers, and support personnel for the 20, 24, '25 fiscal year.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second vote, please. Mullins?
Aye.
Hanlon?
Aye.
Noggle?
Aye.
Wagers?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion we approve the reemployment of recommended temporary teachers for the '24, '25 school year.
Second.
Motion and a second vote, please. Mullins?
Aye.
Hanlon?
Aye.
Noggle?
Aye.
Wagers?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Okay, we have two opportunities on 56 and 57 to propose executive session for teacher employment recommendations for next year and also for support staff for next year. They are listed. As you can see, we are just fast and furious hiring our staff for placement for the '24, '25 school year.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion we approve the, I'll just skip the executive session and make a motion that we approve the employment of the temporary teachers in 958.
I'll second.
My only question was why they all came from OSU? I just couldn't figure.
Because we love OSU, go Pokes! That's what I'm saying.
I have a question.
Yes.
I guess next month we'll have the FFA teacher on?
That is correct. I think she onboards to Wednesday. We get her signature though on Wednesday when she comes in in a temporary contract format, so.
Well, that's good, because.
Any other questions?
I apologize for not going to executive session, I didn't think about that, but.
Oh darn.
Yeah.
Oh darn. I think I have a motion and a second. Yes, vote, please. Mullins?
Aye.
Hanlon?
Aye.
Noggle?
Aye.
Wagers?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
And then I'll, oh, do we need it?
No.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the employment recommend, approval of employment recommendations for the 2024, '25 school year in 59.
I'll second. Did you say second?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I have a motion and a second vote, please. Mullins?
Aye.
Hanlon?
Aye.
Noggle?
Aye.
Wagers?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
So Josh, thank you for being so patient. We probably could have moved it up, so I appreciate you bearing with us for the endurance of the agenda. Item number 60 is the acceptance of bids and awarding contracts to lowest responsible bidders for the admin plaza project, of course, to be contracted through LD Kearns and of course, KKT is our architect on this one. I was pretty thrilled with the three point, not almost $4 million bid package in its totality. We had set aside as part of the revenue lease portion of our bond, 3.5 million. It's over that, but we also knew the commit, the city was committing a million dollars to that project. So we also know that things can happen when you're adding on to a building, but that gives us, we believe, a really great cushion, especially with a contingency built in, to make that project happen. So I can't commend LD Kearns enough for being patient with us as we, you know, planned and fussed a little bit about what to do next and where to put things and all those. They're just really great contractors to work with, so we would ask for board approval to begin that work.
Okay, I've got a question.
Absolutely.
What kind of sign are we going to have there? Because I'm going to tell you, the one that, I am so disappointed in the, in the signage at, at Charles Page High School, that little bitty?
The little bitty.
Tiny thing that you can't get four words on, looks like, I'm sorry, but it looks terrible.
So I.
Really, I mean, we need something, somewhere in this stinking town that is huge, that can promote what we do here in Sand Springs, whether it be from the elementary, the junior high, the high school. We have got to promote our school somehow, other than what Ms. Chatter does with the great internet, but still, people walking down in the, in the, driving around the city need to be able to see what we're doing and they can't see it on a two-by-two little bitty scrolling thing.
Right. We on the admin building, to be honest, Mr. Noggle, have not planned like a video board on the admin building.
Y'all are, y'all are missing the boat.
But we can. I mean, there's room in the budget that if we need to do that, that would be contingency or add-on.
We need something.
Okay.
That promotes what we do in Sand Springs, whether it be the plays that are going on at the high school, the, the concerts that the band is putting on, the.
Sure.
You know, whatever is going on, the football schedule, the wrestling schedule, the basketball schedule, whoever's playing that night, I mean, these people got to know.
Well, and actually at the Triangle Project, probably a great place to put it because it's downtown, honestly, yeah.
Exactly, and there's no houses, so people can't complain about the brightness.
Yeah.
Yes, we need some kind of digital billboard that, that we can promote what's going on.
Okay, I hear you.
Been on this deal since, I don't know, three or four years.
Right.
Putting on the side of the high school, but it's not gone anywhere.
Well, it's a little tricky because we've had problems with that siding at the high school, to be, to be honest. That's the honest, it's been tricky.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, maybe this is a better place to put it.
It may be downtown, so point taken.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to accept bids and award contracts to lowest responsible bidders on the Sand Springs admin plaza project, as all stated in number 60.
Second. As long as we have a big board.
I have a motion and a second vote, please. Mullins?
Aye.
Hanlon?
Aye.
Noggle?
Aye.
Wagers?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Okay, and item 61, I want to take a little bit of time to explain this one because it is only for the first bid package at Clyde Boyd Middle School, because the first bid package will allow us to do the bus loop, which has to be ready by August, when school starts. So we access our revenue lease money at the end of June, meaning to release the work for LD Kearns to start that project, we needed to be able to encumber less, just less than a million dollars, which we will proceed to do out of building fund once this is approved. This will allow us to start the work. When we process our first payout from LD Kearns, we'll be able to use the revenue lease money in order to pay the 920, but to be legal, we actually have to encumber the money to release the work. So we would ask the board to go ahead and vote that singular bid package for the, the bus loop installation at Clyde Boyd Middle School to make sure it's done before school starts in August.
So if I understand correctly, this has to be, this needs to be done by?
We have, it's, we're under a timeframe, yes, limitation. When we first started talking about this project, I think the perspective was we could get it done maybe mid-September. Of course, that causes utter confusion. So we needed that to happen so that when school starts in August, we're ready to go and the buses have the routes and plans to, to move through Boyd. And so we need to encumber. What's going to happen is we'll be able to open up the encumbrance and put that money, unencumber it, put it back in the building fund and then draw down. But for now, because legally we have to have the money before we can bless it to be spent, we have to encumber it in building fund today or well, after it's approved.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion we approve the acceptance of bids and awards of contract to the lowest responsible bidders for the Clyde Boyd Middle School site work.
Second.
But I have a few questions also.
Almost.
I'm, I'm good with the questions. Mr. Irkey, you just made the comment that you want this done by August, but the, but the schedule shows three months. If we start today, we're not through until the September. So I want to make sure that Josh understands that school starts like August the 15th.
20th, yes, he's very, very well aware of that.
So I want to make sure that, that he understands that, we've got that identified somewhere because it's going to rain a couple days between now and then and hopefully he's got rain days built into it because school's going to start on August the 20th. I'm just looking at your schedule values and it shows your general condition to be three months work.
The schedule that I sent out, working on the packages, shows us finishing August 19th, that's when the birthday of school. And it's underlying, and I've made it very clear, do not bid the project unless you can finish in this deadline. And our low-site contractor thinks that my schedule has got plenty of work, so I think we're pretty good about it.
Okay, cool.
Now, the one thing, the only part of this project that I'm 100% sure that I'm going to have done by the time school starts is the light holes, which I think we can operate and function without the light holes because there's going to be a few time with that particular item. But as far as having a functional bus loop, we're going to have.
As long as there's no bright sign shining in my backyard.
No, we're putting that on the squirt.